It is eight thirty. We will go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to Order. Looking for an approval of the agenda, we do have a agenda addition that I would like to have as item number two, a request for approval to hire Cory Bang as the Solid Waste Manager.
Move approval.
Okay.
With the addition.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gross and second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on anything that is not on the agenda? Seeing none. Steve, have we had any correspondence to this piece?
We have not, Madam Chair.
And just as an item of clarification, are people still allowed to address the board remotely during this piece if they'd like?
They are, Madam Chair.
So that's just a request to make through your office?
Yes.
Thank you. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the payment of bills and vouchers from Commissioner Gross, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes are in the packet from August 2nd.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the minutes.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. We'll take our agenda addition now.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, as you just recently mentioned, this morning, we are bringing forward Mr. Cory Bang to be the next Solid Waste Manager. During our interview process, Mr. Bang stood out as the top candidate. He has a great deal of experience. He's been at the landfill for six years and has a variety of experience both with, at the landfill, working at a transfer station, and knowledge of Prairie Lakes. In addition to that, in his previous life prior to that, he's also had management experience where he's had additional responsibility of managing people and also establishing budgets. And so with that, we would be requesting that Mr. Bang be hired as a Solid Waste Manager at grade twenty-four, step two. And with that, I would yield for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Board questions? As noted, Commissioner Campbell and I have been part of those discussions and interviews and really are hopeful that this hire will be a great next step forward for that department, particularly as we make some changes, bringing in the partnership with the city of Morehead for our resource recovery. Certainly, Mr. Bang brings a wide breadth of knowledge to this piece. Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just want to comment about others that applied for the position as well. We did, I think, three rounds of interviews, I think it was, wasn't it, Steve?
Yes.
And within all of those, there were some very capable people that applied for the position. I think there might have been a few of them that maybe just lacked the experience that we felt necessary to move forward. But I think they certainly have bright futures moving on, so Cory, I mean Cory did a good job in his interview, and I think he ranked on the top of everybody on the interview committee, so that's my comment. With that, I would move the request to hire Cory.
A motion to approve the request from Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Campbell, this, as he is currently an employee at the landfill, would cause the need for a backfill.
Yes, and I would, my motion will include backfill.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the hire with a backfill. And a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Wonderful. Congratulations. The next item is a request to waive a penalty for late payment of property taxes for Aurora Adult Foster Care in Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, as you can see through your packet this morning, Dirk and Cynthia Bischel provided an explanation of a water, I guess, some pump failure that happened in their business. As part of that process, through the cleanup, they put their tax paperwork in a different box and unfortunately missed the deadline. They provided the proof through the different invoices for the cost of fixing that basement area. They are citizens who have paid, they've actually paid their tax. The only amount that they have not paid is for 2022 is the forty-eight fifty-eight and have paid faithfully for the time that they've owned property in Clay County. And so with that, they were not able to be here this morning, but asked that this be brought forward. If you identify and look at our policy for waiving penalties and interest, it would appear that it would qualify under our property tax for late payment. That, for any questions?
So the request is to waive just the fee of forty-eight fifty-eight?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
And the payments have been made?
That's correct.
Move to approve the request.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the request.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item would be the budget presentation from Extension. We're two minutes early. Let's see. The next, Rory's not here yet. Rory, would you mind if we took yours one early?
Thank you. Sorry. Rory, your request this morning is to purchase equipment for the cameras, door controls, audio, video for the Resource Recovery Facility.
Yes, that is correct. So we have a couple of different quotes. The first one is for the door controls and the camera system out at the Resource Recovery Campus. That quote is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents. The second quote is for the audiovisual equipment in the conference room. That totals sixty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And we'd also ask for an eight-thousand-dollar allowance for large-format screens and mounting equipment.
What was the number?
The last one was sixty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars.
And then the eight-thousand-dollar allocation?
Yep.
Okay.
So a total of one-hundred-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-and-sixty-one cents.
Okay, so as we've had discussions at the Construction Committee, we've addressed these areas that weren't part of the initial packages, and certainly we knew this was something that we'd need to have and implement there. So I do really appreciate you for bringing this together and getting the information on the quotes needed to run. Is there any further discussion on this? Just to note that this will come out of the Construction FFNE Solid Waste Enterprise Fund.
That's true, Madam Chair. And again, as was mentioned last week by both you and Commissioner Campbell, there are some additional FFNE items that will be brought forward as part of a bigger presentation as far as looking at the entire project here within the next week or so.
Discussion, any?
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion?
Is this added on to the bills or was this part of the bills originally?
FFNE is always, it falls outside of the building contract itself, but it was part of the financial plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. All right, we're still waiting on Extension. Can we, Justin, can we take yours?
The request this morning is, there are three. One, an approval of a partnership contract with MinDOT and the city of Morehead. The second would be approve of the final contract voucher for three bridge replacements. And the last would be an approval of a proposal to install an intersection light. One and twenty-six.
Yes. So the first item, like you mentioned, is a partnership contract. It's with MinDOT and the city of Morehead. So this contract just lists out the responsibilities with the replacement of the salt shed and the demolition of the cold storage building. Joe and I did review this contract with Mike, and he was good with it. And I did reach out to MinDOT, and this contract would nullify the need to update the primary agreement for the joint facility as well.
Okay. Board questions? Board wishes? Discussion?
So, Joe, can you just remind us of the, this was funded under the capital improvement project?
Yeah, yeah. So basically, the cold storage, the deal that we had made is MinDOT and us, you know, we share that cold storage facility right now, which is now getting demoed, actually. I think it's, I don't know if it's down yet, but.
The TARP is down.
Yeah.
The structure itself.
Right. So our goal was to get an agreement in place before we build on that site, and that's what this is. This morning is saying that MinDOT is allowing us to take essentially that square footage of that place and build our own building.
And they'll pay for one-third of the demolition cost on the cold storage.
Yep.
That's their original ownership of that.
Yep. This is basically the agreement that we have in place, so we don't build the building and they come back later, so. We wanted to do it before we started actually building on the site, so it's done. So we've gotten approval of actually the city of Morehead and MinDOT and us, all three of us, to do this, so.
Thanks for the clarification.
Move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the partnership contract.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the final contract voucher.
Yes, so these were three bridge replacements that were completed last, late last fall, and I will need a separate motion for all three. The first one is SAP fourteen-five-ninety-eight-zero-seventy-seven. This is off County Road one-oh-six, Inviting Township. And the final contract amount to be approved is one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars and ninety-six cents.
Move approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And I did forget to mention, this was with Riley Brothers Construction out of Morris, Minnesota.
Okay.
The second project is fourteen-five-ninety-eight-one-oh-eight. This is a township bridge in Morken Township.
Just to clarify, it's five-nine-nine-one-oh-eight, right? You said five-ninety-eight-one-oh-eight.
Yes, five-ninety-nine-one-oh-eight, sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want clarification.
The final contract amount to be approved is one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
Move approval.
Motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
And then the third project is SAP fourteen-five-ninety-nine-one-twelve. This is on Fifty Street North in Cragness Township, and it's actually a shared bridge between Cragness and Morken. The final amount to be approved is one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and four cents.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross. Further discussion?
It's kind of nice to have three come in, a little under.
Yeah.
Yes, every little bit helps.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
And then the third item I have is the approval of a proposal from Parsons Electric to install an intersection light at Casaw one and twenty-six. So this is kind of in conjunction with the grading project we have going on right now. So with the bridge at the north end of the project, it creates a dip in the road, a sag curve that, it's a thirty-mile-an-hour stop condition, so by state aid rules, you have to have an intersection light at that intersection.
We never did before.
Just on the, I think it's because it goes from a fifty-five to a thirty, otherwise we'd have to get a variance to not install the light.
And it was not fifty-five before?
It was fifty-five before. I think with new standards, it creates a thirty, and we weren't able to raise the road because it is a floodway.
Did we include that in the cost of the project?
On the five-year plan, yes. Not when we approved the bid, just because we went out and got quotes separately.
Okay.
But in the actual numbers of the five-year plan, I think I included twenty-five thousand for a street light. Obviously, this came in a little bit under, so.
Move approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross. Well, I certainly see a huge benefit in putting these intersection lights up at, you know, problem, I don't want to say problem areas, but they really have been beneficial in the areas that we put them up in. And certainly, I've had a huge amount of citizen input on their appreciation of that too. And as we continue to move forward, I know there's some initial cost to put these in, but I really feel that they help reduce incidents of those intersections. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do want to comment that I know recently, one of our largest school districts has had some issues in regards to hiring drivers, and because of that, has needed to make some changes to the boundaries. And I know that your department has worked with school districts in terms of safe route to schools, making sure that we've identified crossings and worked with them where we can on our roads to make them safer. I did request that our department work with the school district if there are any areas. You know, I know at fifty-two, there could be an area there.
Definitely.
And I know it can't be an immediate fix, but looking forward, I don't see our workforce challenges changing overnight, so maybe it's just something that we need to get on the radar, certainly to get some of those safe route components implemented if we need to. Commissioner Campbell?
There's somebody specific with the school district, you know?
Steve Moore would be your contact.
Okay. Yeah, that's a really good point. I'm just wondering, though, in a municipality the size of Morehead, within the boundaries of Morehead, is it Morehead that would have to apply for safe routes to schools, or is Clay County still the sponsor?
Morehead is a state aid city, so they would be able to apply for safe routes to school on there.
So, you know, so I think we need to make sure that there's a three-way conversation with this.
Yes.
Because I think if it's safe routes dollars we're looking to for within the city of Morehead boundaries, it's the city of Morehead who has to apply for that.
Yep, definitely.
Yeah, just so, I mean, obviously, it's good that you're involved with it because we could have a county road that was in the jurisdiction of the city.
Definitely.
Yeah, okay.
And I have been looking, Bob and Tom and I have talked a few times, and we're looking to set up a meeting just to kind of go over some different things in the city and county.
Okay, good. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now we can do our budget presentation from the Extension Office. We have Cecilia Amadou. Good morning, Cecilia.
So you may already have the packets in front of you. This year, we are not making any new requests per the MOA agreement. We are, as per last year's agreement, did an addendum for the office support staff, so that's also included in that budget in front of you. And then some additional increase in software. QuickBooks is what this four-H program uses for financial keeping, and that's three-ninety-four a year versus where they've had it where they didn't have to renew. So QuickBooks, there's something different this year, so that's new in our budget of three-hundred and, I put four-hundred dollars in there to cover yearly. Other than that, that's basically the only change, so that twenty-three, twenty-two-three amount is the one-hundred-and-forty-one-six-hundred-and-twenty-six plus the sixty, one second, please. Sixty-two thousand four-hundred-and-forty-two for the office support staff position.
Okay.
And then we kept everything pretty much the same.
Yeah. So, question, as, I did receive your email yesterday about continuing now that we have two applications for the administrative support. Happy to help in whatever, just sorry I didn't get to your email yesterday, but since we've not been able to fill that position since the individual left, are you, it's my understanding that you bill the county for the hours needed, and you know you had a temp person in over the summer. Are there any additional funds available? And if so, how are we working through that? Are we using that to pay for the intern that we had removed to change Macy to point-eight? Or what have you identified?
Yeah, so the position was, there was a gap between October, no, when they had to leave February until June, so the county will not get billed for that amount.
Okay.
The county will only get billed for the time we had an interim in there until when they leave in August.
Okay.
At the time that, hopefully, that won't be an issue at the time that we're not able to fill that position, continue on, the county will not get billed for that. And it is per the MOA and addendum agreement that we fill that position when there's an FMLA or sick leave, or it's our responsibility to make sure that that position is filled and that work is getting done. And so that's why we put an interim in there, especially with the county fair and making sure that there was support in that. And that individual did a very good job filling that position and filling in gaps. So hopefully, we can fill the position this month, or if not, with the, it takes a little time we get through paperwork, so we're hoping that September time, that person will be in the office.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the county can decide with the gap that we had from when Heather left till at this point, if there's something that we can move into an interim. Initially, when we moved Macy's position up to a point-eight, we cut the county's contribution to the intern position, and then the federation still had another money in there to pay for one intern. So we did have one intern this summer versus two. We haven't done an after fair debrief yet to see how that worked out, but that's something that we need to discuss to see.
Can I just clarify? So it was my understanding the county was going to pay for the one intern, but you just said the federation paid for the one intern?
Yeah, the county decided at the time when I came back with Macy's position that.
I thought it went from two to one.
Yeah, it went from two to one, but county only pays for one.
But you just said the federation had money to pay for one.
Yeah, so that's how, previously, we had two interns, county paid one, federation paid one. And so when the county said, well, if we're bumping Macy's position up, we don't have extra funds to pay for the intern, then that county contribution went away.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay.
So, I mean, we are more than happy to bring that back.
No, I just wanted clarification. I did not, I did not think that the federation would be paying for the one that we cut. I thought that we would continue paying for one, not two. Maybe I was not clear.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I believe Cecilia explained it correctly. We ended up taking those six thousand dollars and added it into Macy's position to offset that cost.
To move it to the point-eight.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to internally, a little bit, at the Extension Office, now, I understand that Macy is point-eight, Clay County, and then point-two at?
Becker County.
Becker County. Can you tell me, does her time, is her time spent proportionately in the Morehead Office versus in Becker County?
Yes, we make sure that she is here four days a week and then one day a week fully at Becker County.
Okay.
And then when the county fair ended in Clay County and it was Becker County, we made sure that she wasn't doing Clay County work while she was in Becker County, and then vice versa.
I would imagine when Becker County had the fair, she was probably there the whole week, maybe.
No.
No, she still wasn't?
I mean, I think she had like the piece of the fair. Like when I went to Becker County, I didn't see Macy there because she had.
I guess, I mean, I could understand that particular week, being it's so busy, that, you know, the attention might go there for that particular week.
No.
And I wouldn't have a problem with that. So in terms of your, do you allow in-office visits by residents?
Yes.
Okay, so your doors are open and people can come in and?
Yep. And in the case that, especially, we really try to be better about work-life balance, and so as you know, after the fair, it's just really heated and people need some time to just step away. At that time, with the office support staff person was in the office when staff were gone, some staff ended up getting sick.
Sure.
After the fair, and so they may not see an educator when they came in, but somebody was there to answer their questions.
Somebody was there.
Especially when we're planning for state fair right after county fair, people had to come in and do their paperwork for state fair, so.
Yeah, I know, that's a busy time.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, in the case that the office is closed because they are out in community doing what they're supposed to do, there's always a sign, and sometimes in the regional office, we get people coming in with questions, and the support staff, they were able to assist county support question as well.
Of course, and our other full-time Extension educator that we have, that Clay County.
Mindy.
Yeah, she's obviously in Clay County all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Kaylee had her hand up.
Yeah. Hi, Cecilia. I'm slightly concerned, and you can lay this to rest for me. You said during this hiring process, the paperwork can take some time. I'm hearing across industries that if your hiring process is not quick, you're going to lose all of your candidates. So when you say it's taking some time, how long are you anticipating it would take, and what can you do to expedite that so you're not losing quality candidates?
Yeah, because these individuals work with you, we have to make sure we're doing extensive background check. Sometimes that takes a little bit of time, depending on what the individual, we have some people that work like out of the country, so it's hard to kind of pull some of those. So they really do a good job making sure they have extensive background check on those individuals. That's sometimes where the holdup is, or when we're doing reference checks, we don't want to just offer the position without talking to at least three references. And with my job and moving around and scheduling, sometimes that takes a while. But this last round, we had some candidates, and we kind of moved the paperwork pretty fast because some people had already been in the system already, so it was easy. But unfortunately, we don't know what happened where they declined the position. But I'm working with HR and saying, I don't want to wait. When the position was routed, they kept pushing them to me, and we kept reviewing as we're going, even though the position doesn't close till tomorrow, but we're getting ready to review the ones that we've had. So I think the university understands that we need to move a little bit quicker, and so they work with us once we are able to make our schedules align and get interviews going. So I think this time around, one thing that worked for us was paying for Facebook ads. Some of the people that we pulled was actually all local, so that was, I think it was a good search. Hopefully, we get a successful completion of that.
Thank you. And I do want to say, the interim support that you've had in the office this summer has been very helpful, particularly through summer programming. Just thank you so much for having her in. Just thank you so much for having her in there. I know that there's a lot coming at a new person and she really did a good job mitigating all that, that is that. So thank you for that. And I know this isn't so much a department presentation as a budget presentation, but it, there are some budget implications.
Yeah.
For us as commissioners, certainly with extension, there are so many things that you're doing year, year round. But when we talk locally in the county office, a large percent of that work is done in preparation and implementation of county fair and state showcases. I do know that, that none of that can happen without a strong collaboration with the county fair board. And I will say, because I, I have discussions with those folks, that there are some very serious concerns about making sure that that relationship is as strong as it can be. I know there's been a lot of turnover in our county office. And you know, part of, part of having a successful fair also has some successful, you know, that there are two major fundraisers at the fair for Clay County 4-H. And there were some pretty big gaps in that. And I think there are concerns from the fair board and, and others about the shape of that and making sure we address that so it can be as strong as it can be. Because all of these, the other programming pieces really rely on those big fundraisers at the fair. The other after-school programs and, and programming rely on that. So Commissioner Kaylee and I have had discussions because we were, are, are part of the extension committee about the importance of having maybe a meeting or several over the next few months with the fair board and extension to make sure we're all on the same page, to make sure we're understanding what is extension's responsibility and what does, you know, I know the fair board provides the, the food stand building free of charge because it brings so many people. I just want to make sure that we're clearing up those areas so that it can be as strong as it can be. And so if you need us to facilitate that, I'd be happy to do that. But just don't want it to, to fall for whatever reason.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. I, I was sick right after too, so I've been kind of gone and trying to catch up. So I haven't sat down with staff and kind of done after fair briefing. And so I'm not aware of that. So I will definitely appreciate your help in facilitating that.
And then just one more comment on that. I do know that the 4-H office has a 30-day obligation to send premiums to the 4-H kids. And as of last week, the fair board president had told me that the 4-H office had not requested the stamp for those. And so today, I mean, we're at the 30-day mark. And so it's very important that they request that so they can process those checks and get those to kids.
I'll make a stop on my way.
Thanks.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments regarding the, the fair and the fair board. Many years ago, I was, I was involved with the extension much more than I am now. And there was really, there was really a, a close, tight working relationship between extension and the fair board. And I think it's, it's, you know, if you remove one of those spokes, it just doesn't run right. And I think that's kind of what's being said here. And, and as you move forward and even as you're getting ready to hire the support staff, I recall my time being on the extension committee and, and going to the fair a lot. That support staff person was really hands-on at the fair as well. And, and I think, you know, I think, you know, if you're going to arrange these meetings, incorporating this person in to listen in on these meetings would be, would be very helpful for that person and also for the fair board to get to know them. Because there has to be coordination on many things that take place at the fair, whether it's, you know, certain things that happen at a certain time of day. The fair board needs to know about that so they can plan accordingly. And so I, so I think it's, rather than, you know, shoot from the hip, I think there needs to be a real, real, you know, a real process in place, working together, mapping out how, how the fair should go from beginning to end and how, how extension fits into that.
Yeah, I think that's a good, yeah, that's a good feedback.
Okay. Anything else? Well, as said, there's not a request for the approval. We do that in September when we work through that. But again, there's nothing different than the MOA, just maybe the reflection that we will see as savings from this year because of the hiring piece.
And did I hear that we could possibly move that savings into an intern for 20?
I just wanted to clarify, I was, I was wrong on that. I honestly, Cecilia, I would really like to see that our extension educator pieces, since we did increase that, I'd like to see that that work is, is working. Before I could change it. Certainly, the rest of the board is, is how they are. But I want to make sure that partnership with Becker County, that we really truly are getting the .8 time. And, and I understand that kids and people get sick and I get that. But I, you know, as we move, we've done a lot to address safer barriers because of COVID. And, and we have a lot of our county staff still in person and, and really see the benefit of being able to walk into the office and, and have a conversation with the extension educator in person.
So do you think that's what I guess success in that area looks for you? That people are getting services or that there's expansion of programming? Like how would you know that it's working?
Well, here, so the, here's the thing. You're asking the board chair, but you're also asking a 4-H mom and a club leader. There is exciting opportunity to develop outreach, but you can't throw out what's successful. And I'm not saying that outreach to different populations is not successful. But if, if you walk through the fair and see the amount of children that are there, I don't want to abandon what's great to develop new things. And, and I know that, that a percentage of, say, a kid from Barnesville that brings a steer to the fair, a percentage of that child's steer goes to pay for that other implementation. And those families do that and don't have a problem with it. But you can't abandon those kids to take the 20% to invest over there. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, so I, it's hard to, you're going to get a different answer from everybody else. But you're going to get a particularly focused one from a 4-H mom. And I will say the conversations that you'll get from the fair board will be strengthening on what's been working.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to understand, I guess, yeah, it will be different for everyone, but from my perspective too of what the expectation, mutual expectation is and how can we work together on that, so.
Okay, anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are you expecting James in person?
We are, Madam Chair.
We are a little early. Is, would it be appropriate for anyone ready to do a committee report? Commissioner Groves, could you? Thank you.
Okay, Wednesday, I attended the Wild Rise Watershed Board Meeting up at Ada. Lot of discussion on permits there. They really, they had a lot of permits coming up and a lot of discussion incorporating that in those, supporting the mitt requests. And quite a few were, not quite a few, but there were several where they were denied because of not following some of, some of the stuff. So I was surprised how many were, were denied on it. But there's just a lot of development going on. I'm putting in drainage, drainage to the ditches that the water, there's no place to go. And it's just proof of agreement with the joint powers agreement. And that was just mostly, mostly discussion on the permits. Thursday, I went to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and Commissioner Evinger was there also. There's a new, what they call PAC thing that veterans can apply for. So they were encouraging veterans to apply, to apply for this. And then I think there's a time limit on, on when they can, how long they got to apply for this thing. So they were sort of encouraging veterans to apply for a bonus. Yeah, I think they pretty much encouraged, Jennifer was there. She encouraged them to check with Kurt Cannon to get that, applying for those bonuses. In fact, I think yesterday, today, there's a thing for veterans at the Red Hawks game. Another thing that's probably all that was covered there. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Groves. Could you, Commissioner Kaylee, please?
Yep. On Thursday, I participated in canvassing here from the elections. And yesterday, attended former Sheriff Burquist's funeral. What a tremendous outpouring of love and support from both local residents, family, friends, agencies, and surrounding communities. It was really, really touching to see how many agencies came from surrounding communities to show their love and respect. And then today, at 3:00 PM, at the Family Service Center in Room 4, our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council is meeting. And we have a presentation from Jennifer Ilitch from First Link on the implementation of the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. All residents are invited to attend that if you'd like to learn about 988 and how that's working here locally. That meeting is one that is attended regularly by consumers and providers of mental health services. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Could you, Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Last Tuesday, of course, after our board meeting, we did have the diversion groundbreaking. That was a pretty big event. A lot of speakers from our state delegation. Senator Klobuchar was there and Senator Smith did a video greeting and congratulatory message. And yeah, it was just, it was really good to see finally happen. And then on Thursday, I had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting. And a lot of things, talked about a lot of things. And they certainly miss having Clay County as a member of their, on the health insurance deal. I think they, they noticed a significant drop in their fund balance because of it. However, I, I did remind them that there's certain things to be thankful for. And that's the fact that the big claims that we would otherwise be having at 33%, you know. So there's, that can work both ways. So, but they still offer an awful lot of good things. As I was there that day, there was, I think we had some county staff that was there on some, from, I think from social services that were there and some other areas that Lakes Country provides educational services on. So we continue to have and we're going to monitor the YES program. And I, I know that Jeremy Kovesh, the executive director, is working with Brandon Lunick from the school district on, on. I think the, the biggest issue regarding that facility is, is the, from Lakes Country, it runs in the red every year. It's been running in the red every year by as much as $50,000. And so there's some discussion about would other school districts be willing to help out to offset that cost to keep the program in place. So we'll see where that goes. Hopefully, we can come up with a solution for that. And then on Friday morning, we did have our solid waste interviews. Again, we, we had three interviews Friday morning. All were good applicants. And obviously, there, we did come up with one that kind of stood out amongst the, those that interviewed. And then we took action on that today. And I did also, the, the Bill Burquist funeral was really amazing. Then I had an opportunity to park outside the old Jerry's Bar on 11th Street and watch the procession go by, and it was really something. And Commissioner Kaylee talked about all the different agencies and entities from around here. But there were some from quite a ways away that also came here to show their respect. And it was really, really quite the, quite the sight to see. And there was an awful lot of citizens that were showing their appreciation by lining the streets as well. I know where I was parked, it was full. You couldn't, you couldn't have gotten another vehicle in there, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Still waiting on James? I also attended the diversion authority groundbreaking last Tuesday. And as someone who was part of the governor's task force that was tasked to find a solution or a compromise for that, it really, those were hard, hard discussions. And hard discussions will continue as we work with, with landowners. But it, it was a large step forward. And can't help but think of, I know they did their best to include so many people that were part of those discussions. But there were countless landowners that were part of discussions locally to work on insurance and farm mitigation and water and additional projects. And there's just, the scope of the folks that have provided input on that is just something that you could never have a snapshot in, in a two-hour groundbreaking. So it, it was really cool to have the amount of people present as they did. Certainly, in terms of workforce, will be a huge asset to local workforce for them. It will be a challenging difficulty for us, but anyhow. That Thursday, then I attended the Red River Basin Commission, the joint Minnesota Joint Powers Board discussion, had a really great presentation on, I'm not going to say it right, but is it hypotometry that is, LIDAR has never been able to penetrate the, the water to give a picture of what the elevation underneath the water is. And they have this new development that you can run the river channel in this hypotometry. I'm probably saying it wrong. Can take photos of the bottom six inches of the water. So we're now able, they're in the process of doing that, taking photos of what the riverbed looks like. That will be beneficial to all of us really to understand what erosion is doing and sediment control in the river. So that was really an eye-opening presentation. And then had good discussion from all of the different counties that were present at that board on projects and challenges and opportunities that they are experiencing. I also attended the solid waste manager interviews on Friday. A great, great discussions with all of the candidates. And as a person that sits on boards that, that you have conversations with folks, it, it really is eye-opening when you have such a, a deep candidate pool and they are saying things that really cause you to think as well. And, and I can say that there, or Friday, I really left that meeting thinking, wow, there were some great points that were brought up and, and how can we implement this going forward? So excited for the solid waste department as we move forward with that. And also, I, I also attended the Burquist funeral yesterday. Huge support goes out to Bill and Annie's children. Certainly, they, they have been part of that huge community service sacrifice that, that comes when, when you have someone in service like that. But to see not only all of the different entities, but the huge amount of Clay County employees, past and present, that were at that was, was really a testament to the leadership and relationships that, that Bill had made. So it was really a sad opportunity to see those. So it was really a sad opportunity to see those people, but really great to see those people because they're just quality, quality people. That does conclude my report. But I did notice on the agenda, we currently have, there's a Prairie Habitat tour Lissard Sam's is doing on Thursday that is advertised. But on the 5th Tuesday, we don't currently have a board meeting scheduled. Did want to make this board aware, there's a possibility that we will be having a full board interviews for the companies that are in the process of submitting RFPs for our transfer facilities. So if that works, keep it open still. Not ready to officially set that in stone, but know that that's in the works. Okay? Steve, are we still waiting on James?
We are. I can give my report, and if he's not here, I'd.
And I think something might have come up over there. So I feel like they're, these are budgeted, not new requests, so we'll see.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the Tuesday, last Tuesday, I participated in the ribbon cutting event for the FM diversion. On the 10th, I had some ongoing discussions with Matt Evans from Burns and Mack in regards to the resource recovery facility. That afternoon, I also spoke with Derek LePointe. You know, as he's worked closely with us and also our rural cities and making, ensuring that when there are deed grants that are available, that we're continuing to get those to our rural cities. And we also had some discussion on the Moritz Center Mall. There had been a recent tenant meeting with the update of the development of that area. That afternoon, we also met with Darren and Josh Hagum. I believe that at this point, we've had our initial meetings with eight of our nine unions. And so here, within the coming weeks, we'll be coming to this board in a closed session to get some guidance and moving forward, so. On the 12th, I participated in the solid waste manager interviews, has been addressed. And yesterday, also participated or attended the former sheriff, Bill Burquist's funeral. And so with that, I concludes my report.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Steve, you had some conversation with Derek LePointe, and part of it was dealing with, obviously, future plans that might be going on with the Moritz Center Mall. An issue that we need to really be on top of is, of course, we're a tenant in there with our DMV. And can you tell me again when our lease is up on that?
Our lease would be up next November, in October.
That's just like a hop, skip, and a jump away. And I guess, after what you've learned, is it likely that the current facility would remain for an additional year or two before anything would happen there? It sounds to me like that's possible. And if so, should we be working on that guaranteed extension? Or didn't we have, within our original lease, didn't we have the ability to expand that? And if so, should we be working on that contract now to do that? Otherwise, we are going to be faced with having to find an alternative site sooner. And I just think that we need to, I think it would be in our best interest to extend that if we can at this point.
And we certainly can have those conversations. I have asked Roar's representatives if they would be willing to come before this board to kind of provide some oversight. And part of that discussion certainly could be, could be what their plans are. I think that we know at this point that they're looking at sort of a phased approach. And so I don't know if we would have years, but we may have an extended period of time. But we certainly can work on finding what that frame is.
I guess I don't want it to come to be March and find out that we've got six months to find a new place. And that, you know, and that conversation should be starting now and not in March, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Darren?
I just called James, and they are dealing with a big problem with one of the kids down there. And so he just asked, that he is requesting to fill two full-time juvenile counselors in the non-secure unit. I believe these are already budgeted, so.
These, so based on the memo, these positions are both mandated staffing, part of the staffing plan and in the 2022 budget. Okay, board discussion. Wishes.
Both to approve.
Commissioner Gross makes a motion to approve both the rehire of the two open positions.
Second, it's my understanding that it's with backfill if it's as described.
And there's a second to the motion, and there is a request with backfill, Commissioner Gross. Reflects that as well, okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thanks for handling that, Darren, I appreciate that. Our next item on the, we'll ask, are there any other updates? Colleen, did you have any updates? Mr. Leeser, did you have any items?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our next item would be a closed session to do our county administrator annual eval.
Move to close.
A motion to close from Commissioner Campbell. And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are closed. Gone, we are back in session. Coming out of, we did have a closed session this morning to discuss our county administrators' annual evaluation. And as a board, we are so thankful for the job that Steve is doing for the county. We are quite fortunate to have you and feel you've really met so many different needs for the county in terms of implementing programming and staff. And thank you from all of us for the work that you do. It is, there were, I don't want to go on record, but I might say Commissioner Gross said you are almost walking on water, if not walking on water in certain areas. So those are some huge marks. All of us had you so high in terms of how we rated you. We are recommending that you receive the step that you are due this year, so.
I would move that.
Second, a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve that piece. A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie. Anything else for the board this morning? Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.